Called to order this special meeting for City of East Grand Forks, City Council, Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 is now 5:00. For the City Administrator, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstad.
Here.
Council President Chad Grassel. Council Members Clarence Federer.
Here.
Mike Pachivinsky.
Here.
Tim Riappell.
Here.
Henry Tweeten.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does turn in quorum. Number one, review the abstract of both cast for City Council Members' positions during the state general election. Mr. Murphy?
Again, excuse me, I'm on the wrong one. Okay. Yes, we received the vote tally and we have that, the official returns here as far as the official vote counts. So what we need to do in order to canvass these is to officially approve them at the first available council meeting. So with that, we would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second. You going by number two also? You're not combining those?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So the first part, thank you for that correction. The first portion on there is to review the abstract of the votes cast. So has everyone seen a copy of this? If, by the way, any questions or comments on it?
Number two, consider adopt resolution number 18-11-75 declaring the results of the general election returns for the November 6th, 2018 city election for the City of East Grand Forks. Moved by Riappell, second by Federer. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Rule call, please.
Olstad.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Federer.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Move. Moved by Demers, second by Federer. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Mean is adjourned. Called to order the City Council work session for the City of East Grand Forks, Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 is now 5:02. City Ministers, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstad.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Federer.
Here.
Mike Pachivinsky.
Here.
Tim Riappell.
Here.
Henry Tweeten.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Does turn in quorum. Number one, request for preliminary approval for 2045 long-range transportation plan. Mr. Helgen.
President, Council Members Mayor, Earl Helgen, Grand Forks, East Grand Forks Metropolitan Planning Organization. Tonight I have with me a project team. Brandon here from Kimley Horn and Scott with WSB. And we're going to take team presentation to make sure that you're fully informed as to what it is that we're asking you to formally adopt into your city's planning document. So why the MPO is interested in having you adopt it as part of your city planning documents is to hopefully have a good transition from what you want as projects as to what we can program for you to get federal funds and implement those projects. And so by adopting it as part of your city plan, everybody should be informed that these are our cohesive efforts to get a transportation system in Grand Forks, East Grand Forks. And this is not a new thing. We've done this traditionally every five years on a cycle. This next slide shows we're at an end of a five-year cycle, right here at the bottom, where we're asking for consideration of the 2045 document. Just to refresh, we spent time with you updating your land use plan out to the year 2045. On the far right is the East Grand Forks basic document map, and then on the other side is the Grand Forks. So again, we do both cities' land use plans, and then from those land use plans that inform us how you're going to grow, we do a transportation plan update. The next series of slides just identify what your land use is informing us, where your housing will be in both communities. And the first one here is we forecast traffic out to year 2030. So this is your housing growth areas. This is your housing growth another 15 years or out to 2045. Similarly to housing, we're using your document to inform us where your employment will be growing. This is your 2030 employment, and this is your areas of 2045 employment growth for Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. And again, because we're a metropolitan area, we're showing things as a metropolitan mapping system. So with that, I'll transfer it over to Brandon, and he'll walk you through the next part. So we'll talk a little bit about goals, objectives, performance measures, and targets, which are part of the planning process. So here's the vision statement for the plan. The Grand Forks, East Grand Forks Long Range Transportation Plan envisions a community that provides a variety of complementary transportation choices that are fiscally constrained for people and goods. And the next step, you've got that vision statement, and then we've identified a variety of goals. So on the left are 10 goals, and as a part of that, there's goal statements associated with each of the goals. So those goals areas can vary from economic vitality, you know, look at system preservation, safety, a variety of factors. And then we've got performance measures that we look at, that we'll talk a little bit about for several of these goals. So on the right, there were a total of 24 performance measures that we looked at, and it shows where they're assigned for the various goals. And on the bottom are two newer focus areas of resiliency and tourism. This is kind of a graphic that shows a little bit of the, how performance-based planning works. So we kind of have all of this goes in a circle, the various things, goals, objectives, standards, performance measures, targets. Ultimately, we look at funding and performance and develop a long-term vision, and we kind of go around and around from a planning perspective. So from a, safety is a really big, a big focus area, and there's a large initiative from the National Strategy on Highway Safety to go toward zero deaths. So most of you have heard about this, and certainly those of us are in the industry. So long-term, we want to get to zero deaths. So some of the things that we look at here is establishing some goals to help get us there. Where on the right column, we're looking at trying to get to zero deaths. We look at a five-year number of fatalities on a rolling average, and basically there's some complication because each state has different statistics. But ultimately, when we look at a variety of parameters, this table basically shows on the top what the measure is, like number of traffic fatalities, and it provides a comparison of what's going on per state for each state. So in North Dakota, there were 138 traffic fatalities. The short-term goal, fewer statewide. In Minnesota, there's 375, and you can see they've kind of targeted the decline on both of those. There's a midterm goal, and then there's a long-term vision to get to zero. Basically, we went through these various metrics related to fatalities and crash-related injuries, and from an MPO perspective, established some goals that looked at the region in itself, and where there's some short-term goals to try to get on that path to get to a zero, zero deaths. A couple other performance measures that we looked at are, performance measure number two, which is a federal performance measure, looked at the condition of bridges, interstate pavements, and non-interstate pavements on the, on the, what condition they're in, good or poor. So basically, we looked at what some targets are for Minnesota, for the state targets, and then for North Dakota, so two-year and four-year targets. And ultimately, the MPO itself adopted some targets on the right as to where they want to be in terms of pavement performance and bridge performance for each of the metrics. And on the bottom, there's mobility, where we look at reliability and some truck travel time reliability in terms of how goods can move, and so there's some MPO goals there as well. So along with the goals and objectives, kind of the next step in the process is to develop a baseline of where your system, or how your system is currently operating today. So there's a lot of different metrics that we look at for that, in addition to asking the public what their perception of your system is. And so one way that we did that is we had a website, the forkstreet2045.org, that was available for people to provide their input. And that was an interactive website where people could go into this program called Wiki Mapping and provide a geographic location of where they wanted to provide a comment, and then provide their input. So we have a database of all of those comments and where they're located. This is just kind of a summary of where those locations are, and the breakdown of the various comment areas, whether it was safety, pavement conditions, signals, et cetera. This is a recap of our online engagement, again, breaking it down by demographics and age into the different categories. Just going to quickly fly through a bunch of the different maps that we prepared to summarize the existing conditions. So we have existing 2015 traffic volumes, intersection level of service, so that's kind of a report guard of how your system is operating, with A being kind of a free-flow condition, C being kind of an average condition, and E and F are the conditions where you'd be looking at making system upgrades. So we looked at this both on an intersection basis, and then also looked at crash rates. The starred areas are the areas that are kind of above what you would expect to be the average crash rate. The green were under the expected crash rate. And again, you can see some of the corridors would be 32nd, which you would expect in Columbia and in 17th and in Washington. Also looked at some of the other modes, existing railroad crossings. You have your quiet zone identified there, and some of your spur lines. Also then kind of warping forward to the future conditions, we do put together a travel demand model, a computer model, that attempts to replicate what forecasted traffic will be based upon forecasted land use. So there's some demographic information that's input into that model, population, employment, and households. So you can see the housing data that Earl talked about earlier, that is input into the travel demand model, along with those other factors. We break the model down into increments, so there's the 2030 forecast, and then there's also the volume-to-capacity ratio of those roadways, and the 2045 forecast, which is the out-year of the plan. And we have- This is a toggleback between the 2015 existing traffic versus with the 2045. So if you just toggle this back and forth, you can focus in on where we're seeing more red corridors growing than we were in 2015. So Scott, if you can try to just- Go ahead, there you go. See, I hear you're seeing a lot more red than- A lot more red. So here's the forecasted value. 2030, here's 2045. Yep. So the red, or the areas of anticipated congestion increase significantly from the 2030 forecast year to the 2045. So this is kind of a summary of some of the main corridors that we're anticipating to be congested in 2045, and I think intuitively, you would probably not be surprised by the locations that you see here. The existing bridges, Minnesota Bridge, Kennedy Bridge, Sorley Bridge, Gateway, 42nd, Columbia, Washington Street, 32nd, and Demers. So kind of the last step of our initial assessment of the forecasted conditions is to look at, from more of a system perspective, what the dollar amount will be to address those needs long-term. Looking at all the different modes, bike pad transit, actually, the transit's a separate document, but the multimodal streetscape projects and studies, state-of-good repair, which is your pavement preservation, your discretionary projects, and your system capacity projects, and your safety projects. So adding that all up, along with your existing program projects, you're at about $700 million of, of needs. So the investment direction, how do we address those needs long-term as part of a plan? We have to kind of put together a financial budget of how we're going to pay for those identified needs. There's a lot of different funding sources that go along with that, at the federal level, the state level, at North Dakota and Minnesota, City of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks, and at the Polk County and Grand Forks County levels. So we have documentation of all those existing revenue sources, and we've come up with projections, working with NDDOT and MINDOT and the local agencies, of what a reasonable forecast is for those revenues moving forward through the year 2045. So this is kind of a summary of how that forecast plays out into the different funding programs, about $417 million of anticipated revenue, and these are kind of funding silos where the money has to be spent in these, in these various programs. So again, the input that we have at the federal level and the state level is that we need to tie our investment back to the goals and objectives and the performance measures and the associated targets that are established as we allocate these funds. And so there are some, some parameters that we have to work within. Kind of at a high level, without getting into the weeds, the parameters that we're directed to follow from a federal perspective and at the state DOT level is that we have to emphasize preservation of the existing system, bridges and roadways, also emphasize facilities of national and regional significance, and then also focusing on the FAST Act and what those laws require. So we did a little planning activity at one of the open houses to ask the public if they had 100 hypothetical dollars, how they would spend those dollars on the transportation system. And so this is a kind of a summary of the results of that unscientific poll. You can see kind of a potpourri of different interests, new river crossings, rebuild existing infrastructure, signals and signage, safety improvements, and new freeway interchanges were some of the main things that were identified. Of course, another thing that we have to consider as we're putting together a recommendation for future investments is the buying power of the dollar. With inflation over time, that buying power decreases, and so the, the value or the amount of projects that we can build today is significantly greater than what we can do in the future. So that's going to reduce our ability, unfortunately, to build projects long-term. We did have a website, again, as I mentioned earlier, that has a summary of the financial plan and all the other planned chapters. So there's PDFs that you can drill down into and get into a lot more technical detail of the assumptions and how these different components of the plan were put together. So the, the actual program of projects that are included in the recommended plan is called the current revenue scenario. And again, I mentioned earlier that there's about $417 million of funds that were anticipated to be available. The current revenue scenario includes $266 million of projects that are recommended for what we call state-of-good repair, which are basically the system preservation projects, the Main Street program is kind of the downtown multimodal streetscaping types of projects, and the safety projects. You can just kind of see graphically here, again, the comparison of the revenues on the left and how that compares to the currently recommended projects, $266 million. And I'll explain in a minute why there's a gap between the revenues and the recommended Again, one thing that we can't forget is that the current TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program, must be consistent with your long-range transportation plan, so we wanted to just bring to your attention. These are some of the high-profile projects that are in the MPO's current Transportation Improvement Program that you will see under construction, and obviously, the 2017 projects are already, and 18 projects are already underway or completed, but some of the 19 and 20 projects, you'll see those coming online very soon. And this is just a breakdown of the key projects coming up in the 2022 funded program in Minnesota, the US2 and US Business 2 Intersection Improvements. And on the North Dakota side, the Washington Street Underpass Reconstruction and North Columbia Road Reconstruction from Second Street through the University Avenue area. So this is just kind of a real super-high-level summary of the recommended scenario, the constrained scenario, if you will, and the projects that are over $5 million. Obviously, you can see the focus areas on Columbia Road, 32nd Avenue, and in Washington, and then also on the East Grand Forks side, the US2 corridor. So this is a little bit of a breakdown by the program level, and I'm not going to get into the weeds too much, but we have on the, on the Minnesota side a summary and also on the, on the North Dakota side. So the first iteration of funding was a focus on kind of the red roadways, which are the interstate and state highways. And then, and you can see on, on the East Grand Forks, some minor arterials that were funded along the Bigland Road corridor there, and then up further to the north, just south of the US2 area. Similarly, on the North Dakota side, focusing first on the interstate and the state highway system, and then secondarily, on the minor arterial system. Actually, there was no projects identified on the minor arterial system on the North Dakota side. I-29 north of Gateway unfortunately missed the cut, and then also 32nd Avenue, although there are some projects funded in the short term on that, long-term preservation was left out on 32nd Avenue for financial constraint reasons. There were a few projects on the Collector County Road System that did make the cut into the program. So again, this is a summary of the financial constraint. On the, on the right, the $266 million and the $417 of revenue. The second iteration of funding went to what was called the Urban Roads Program, which is more of the local street system, if you will. And you can see, as I'm highlighting here, the projects that made the cut into that local program, $130 million invested into these various projects. One thing to note on the local system, on the North Dakota side, obviously, Grand Forks has their local option sales tax. There is $55 million of unallocated local revenue on the North Dakota side, and there's kind of a pot, if you will, of $300 million of unmet needs that could potentially be candidates for those local dollars that have been unassigned at, at this point. So kind of getting to the reason why there's a gap between the $417 million in identified revenues and the $266 million in investments. Part of that is the $50 million of unallocated local resources on the Grand Forks side tied to the local option sales tax. Another big part of that is that on the North Dakota side, the safety program is a five-year program. We have a 20-plus-year plan, so beyond that five-year program, there's unidentified safety projects on the North Dakota side that will need to be worked through with, with Grand Forks and NDDOT and Grand Forks County to identify those projects long-term. Similarly, on the Minnesota side, East Grand Forks and Polk County, there is a Minnesota and county safety plans, but at this point, there are not any revenues identified for the MPO area to utilize those funds. So that's definitely an issue that Earl and the MPO will be working with the city on and Polk County to identify what those future safety projects would, would be long-term. Guess kind of wrapping up here on the financial, we don't want to forget about operations and maintenance of the system. That is a required component of our financial plan, and so we do have measures both on the North Dakota side and the Minnesota side to attempt to quantify what those maintenance and operation revenues are and the associated needs to keep the system working in, in good I guess lastly, these are some discretionary projects that have been identified that are beyond the financial forecast at this point, some key projects that I'm not going to run through, and you can read them on the, on the screen there, but river crossings, new grade separations, key intersections, additional lanes, and some key state-of-good repair projects that would be key to, to help you improve your system. This is kind of a map that kind of illustrates where those projects are, are located. So from a river crossing perspective, the map on the left shows what the 2015 volume-to-capacity ratios are, and so looking at that, basically, there's an issue more at the Sorley Bridge. When we look out into the future and we look at what our volume-to-capacity ratios will be in 2045, we see that basically, we have volume-to-capacity issues at all three crossings. So really, what this, what this task was to do was really take a look at various river crossing locations and how they would serve future traffic with the goal of trying to see, seek relief for local traffic, look at potential benefits to particular neighborhoods, kind of compare where, what each crossing, how each crossing would perform, and see if we could get things narrowed down a bit. Prior plans, there's a long history of looking at river crossings, and most recently, the crossings had been Merrifield for more of a bypass regional traffic and 32nd Avenue for a local traffic. So we were reviewing some of what had been done in the past. Just in terms of the overall scope of work bullets, there are items that we were doing was we were looking at five crossings, starting at 17th Avenue, south to the north, and going all the way to Merrifield Road. We were looking at 2045 volumes, and we're, again, we're comparing some impacts. Here's kind of the, some of the level of what we were looking at in terms of where some of the alignments would be. So being this is a plan, we couldn't get into super-great detail, but we could look at, you know, what alignments would look like, and we built off some of the work that was done in the past. So this is kind of what the 32nd Avenue south alignment would look like. There was a little bit more detail because we had to develop some planning-level quantities because we wanted to develop some cost estimates so we could look at benefit-cost ratios. So this shows a little bit of where the profile might be and how it looks versus existing conditions, so we could kind of add up, when I say quantities, how much dirt, you know, earthwork we would work with, curb and gutter, some of the big parameters. A construction job would have hundreds, we're trying to keep it high level. We did look for, at all of the crossings, kind of a comparison of what would happen to traffic volumes. So on the left, it's basically showing the volume-to-capacity ratios for what would happen with the 32nd Crossing. How does traffic change? So when you put them side by side, you can kind of see how traffic moved around. And then on the right, we have basically what's the existing traffic volume at some key lengths, what would be the no-action traffic volume in 2045 without that particular crossing, and then we added the crossing. So again, we could kind of have some comparisons of what happened based on using that travel demand model. And here's kind of that draft. You look at where the Merrifield River Crossing, where that would cross or may cross. Some just key bullets we looked at is, you know, the Point Bridge would operate better under crossings that were more to the north, basically 17th Elks or 32nd. As the crossings moved further to the south, less traffic gets pulled off of the Point Bridge. Gateway Drive operated better under all crossing scenarios except for Merrifield. Merrifield just, it was a little farther south, so it didn't necessarily pull that much from the north. Washington Street operated better under 17th and Elks Crossing, although all scenarios had some segments with some issues, so it isn't like anything saves Washington. And Belmont Road operated better under all crossing scenarios based on the link level of service. Um-
of service. Belmont and Fourth Avenue intersection level of service showed some mitigation is required under the Marifield Crossing scenario. We did look at a variety of intersections in terms of what their operations would be, kind of worst-case under the crossing, then we identified for the majority of them what some mitigation measures would be long-term to get them from the level of service F and E to an acceptable level of service. One of the key things that was somewhat interesting as we looked at it is how traffic varied a little bit. So as you were looking at crossings like 32nd or to the north, it definitely was relieving some of the local traffic that was going more into town to the north on Bigland Road, for example. You could see similar, some trends down to the south with the Trunk Highway 220 Crossing, where it showed there were some more regional traffic pattern changes related to the Marifield Crossing to the south. And this is another slide that kind of compares for every river crossing, how some of the traffic changed at various locations. So again, this helps showed where, as the crossings were generally to the north, there were some benefits at some local locations. And as you looked at the regional impacts on Marifield Road, there were some traffic patterns that changed that showed, hey, there's more regional traffic moving into Marifield. We did have certainly some meetings with, this was a meeting with city and county staff. We did have a bunch of collaboration to say, hey, if the 47th Crossing happened, how would there be some roadway connections? Because there's some infrastructure that would be relatively significant to get all the way to the 47th Crossing due to lack of improved facilities that part of the south. So there'd be improvements to 200th and Ryan Hart Drive, and talked a little bit about that. We developed some opinions of probable costs for today's value. So basically, we looked at early on, high and low river crossings, and there's ranges provided ultimately due to the higher cost there was. The Executive Board of the MPO voted to focus on the low crossings. The top one was just some of the prior cost estimates where they were available. So you can see certainly, as Scott was saying earlier, inflation is not our friend, unfortunately. And as you compare these and look at benefit-cost ratios, which looks at, hey, what's the cost of the project versus the benefit, where we looked at things like reduction in mile, reduced miles traveled and reduction in delay. You know, Marifield Road from that regional perspective kind of sticks out in the bottom. And then 32nd performed the best in terms of crossing summaries farther to the north for that local traffic. So basically, at this point, this slide's basically like we looked at the analysis and we're at a similar place versus the past, where 32nd from a local perspective seems to make the most sense, and Marifield from a regional perspective looks to make the most sense.
So with that, we're here, obviously, today seeking preliminary approval. We're also going to go over to Grand Forks City Council right after this and ask the same motion. Assuming that we move forward, we'll be here December asking for final action. And we do have an MPO board meeting scheduled on the 19th of December. At that point, the MPO does have to make a decision. We are at the end of our five-year cycle. That is a harsh timeline that we do have to meet. And so the MPO board will have to adopt something, present it to our state and federal partners, and that allows us to start the next five-year cycle. And then with that, that's what we have to inform you as to what we're asking you to adopt as part of your city document.
Anybody have any questions for him at this time? Everybody fine with, given the preliminary approval? Henry, you have something?
I'd just like to make a comment. If you've been reading in the Minneapolis Tribune, you find that the new governor-elect likes to build highways and bridges. And we customarily go down a delegation from the council to discuss this matter, matters with the state, not only in regard to bridges and highways, but many, many other items. And you projected it fine, but I personally would like to see it expedited. And I think the population of the area, both cities and area, would like it. And we've had some discussion on it, but we're going to try to set up an appointment with him before he's sworn in. For your information, he and I have something in common, and I have other contacts. So when we do that, we'll advise you, we'll advise him. And obviously, he'll point his highway commissioner and get contact with the other. Now, there's one other issue here besides just traffic. There's a safety issue by another bridge. It's pretty obvious every time we fix a bridge why it gets to be a little hairy when like we're up here at the Kennedy and so forth. And it's to everybody's advantage to try to do it. Now, his program, as far as financing, is different, but he's got the votes pretty much. And if somebody wants to vote against building better highways in the state of Minnesota, why, they're going to be taken on quite a few people. But we'll keep you, the city administrator will advise you, and Doc Gander and Mark Olstead will be going down, and perhaps some other members. But this has been a long time going. And for your information, I attended the original hearing on the National Highway Bridge when Blackpink was chairman and Don Fohn. So I'm not exactly a newcomer to the scenario. No further comments, Mr. President.
Eric Gander.
So I appreciate the comprehensive approach that you all take to the planning of all of these things for our community, Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. So the MPO and the consultants that we've gathered here, I think we have good expertise to take that long view. Some would snicker at the thought of a 25-year plan that we revisit every five years. How's that? If it's a 25-year plan, isn't it good for 25 years? But what you're admitting is, in all the out-years, it's really hard to predict with any detail what's going to happen, but you still have to try to look ahead that far and then revisit at that five-year interval to see, did it happen or didn't it? And then you reset your aim and then go to the next 25. But I like that it sure considers things like land use, the future growth. It brings all the funding that would be available. It brings in all government jurisdictions, from the federal to the state to the county to the local, probably some townships involved. Also looks at the effect on local residents and the regional effect. And so we know these presentations have the potential to be just a little bit dry in how they come across, but they're hugely important in setting the strategy for all the other decisions we make inside of that. So thank you.
Anybody else have anything this time?
Just to help Henry, when you guys do go down to St. Paul and talk about, the one thing that this plan does provide you proof is, is that we do have the ability to maintain what we have. And so many times, a lot of requests for money for new things is not favorably viewed because you can't show that you can maintain what you currently have. We have, in this document, given you that proof, that what you have, we can maintain in a state-of-good repair. And what you're asking for is something that is needed to allow the community to progress forward.
Thank you, sir.
One thing, it would be ideal if we could get the new governor up here. That would enhance it, and I think it would expedite it. But that might not be possible because he'll have a multitude of things to do.
Appreciate it. I know you guys have to run over to Grand Forks, so appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. Move on to number two, consider to purchase pump for swimming pool.
Thank you, Mr. President. So you all recall last summer, the main recirculation pump for the swimming pool broke down in early part of July, and we made it through the rest of the swim season with a temporary pump that Public Works Department loaned to us. So I've got some information on the replacement of that pump. I had, I worked with US Aquatics, the engineering company, we had to help us kind of put the pool back together with your initial breakdown. I had them refer us to a pump company, a pump specialist, just to make sure that we knew exactly what we were getting, because we found out the cost was a little bit higher than we may be expected on this recirculation pump. Had them take a look and see if there is anything that they could refer to us that maybe would be cheaper and serve the same purpose or do the work that we expected it to. And so the document that you have from WW Getch and Associates, that one shows in your packet, the price of the Marlowe Prime Line pump, the 17,563. That's the pump that we have in place at the pool, had in place at the pool that broke down this summer. The second pump that they gave us a price estimate on, the Aurora pump, that one you can see is much cheaper, but it would take a lot of replumbing and changing of how the pump room itself looks if we did that. So in the long run, after we had them look at it, we talked with Lundseth Plumbing, talked with US Aquatics, we decided that this, the existing pump that we have there is the one that we would like to continue to go with. And just knowing, you know, going forward in the future, that if we ever have a breakdown like that again, that it has the same lead time. It's always going to be a five-to-six-week lead time to get that pump rebuilt, because it's just, it's basically specially made out of the state of California, whereas the Aurora pumps are maybe a little bit more readily available. The only addition to that, then, would be, in those conversations, we found out, or we talked a lot about in our operations of the pool, that we need to maintain a 900-gallon per minute flow rate in order to be able to turn all the water in the pool over in six hours. The Department of Health requires that turnover rate. And we were having trouble maintaining that with this pump. And the first thing, the Galerian thing they found when we looked at that was that the lint and hair basket, the strainer basket right before that, they thought looked smaller than what they are used to seeing. And so they did a little research on it and have suggested a bigger-size strainer basket. In order for us to maintain the rate of flow that we needed, we had to change that current basket, put a new screen in it basically every hour and a half to two hours, which just is not, it doesn't, it's not consistent with operations in a pool. There's other pools that change at one time a day. So that's kind of the direction they gave us, was to go to this bigger strainer basket with that price for 3,760. That larger basket should achieve that, that we hopefully will only have to change it once a day. That one is rated at a 900-gallon per minute flow rate. So with the combination of the pump that we have and the bigger strainer basket, we should be able to achieve that and be able to maintain that throughout the day. And Lundseth Plumbing, I'm sorry, Lundseth Plumbing would do the install on this.
Anybody have anything? Mr. DeMars.
Thank you, Mr. President. So if we go with the duplicate of the existing pump, will we have any issues with oxidation?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Is it going to rust or curl?
It's a, it'd be a cast iron impeller inside of a cast iron pump. So there's, inevitably, that's going to build a little bit of rust up on it, but it doesn't sound like it's a concern. I mean, this pump is made specifically for pools. When we had WW Getch in there, Lundseth in there, they, none of them had a concern with the fact that that impeller was rusted inside of it. It's just, it sounds, you know, it's just kind of a, it's an expectation with a big cast iron impeller like that.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Vedder.
So if we went with the Aurora, what's the cost to redo the plumbing? 10,000, 20,000, 30,000?
I didn't even ask the question, a specific number on it, just that it was significant. It would be, instead of just replacing the pump, it would be replacing, or at least reprogramming, the electric motor that powers that. And in the old pool setup, prior to the renovation, the pump was flooded, which means that it was submerged in the water. And this one is not. The current, the current self-primer is not. The new one would have to be. It would, so it would take the concrete work that's inside that pump room, inside the surge tank, it would take changing the concrete work, changing how the plumbing is set up to put it in. So I did not even ask the question of what is that cost, because the direction from WW Getch and from Lundseth was that it was very significant, and they suggested the best thing to do would just be to continue with the one that we had in there.
Mr. Murphy.
I can add to that just a little bit. The big, the big thing why, when Reed talked to me about that, why we didn't really take a serious look at that and use the time for that, it's just because the, what do they call it, the deep well, that's
The surge tank.
The surge tank that's in it. Typically, that's where that pump would go into there, but the one that we have is undersized for that pump that we have. It just physically wouldn't fit in there. And so you would, you'd have to bust that out. And so they just said it would be, it would be significantly more expensive than what we'd be doing here, just because you'd have to somehow get in the tight quarters in there to bust that and go all the way down and make that surge tank bigger, that it would, it would be a massive undertaking.
Mr. DeMars.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I kind of follow where Mr. Vedder is going with it. It would be interesting to know what that number is for the fact that if you do have a plan, or a problem, if you're talking about a five-week lead time, that's basically your sum. So is it, if it's 20,000, you know, plus the 7,000, you're talking 27,000 versus 17,000, so it's a $10,000 added expense. But in your five, six, seven, 15, when you have to, when that goes, you don't lose half your summer, depending on when it happens, all your summer or what, you know. So, and you're saving $10,000 on the next one that you get. So I guess.
The other one's a four-week. The other one's a four-week turnaround.
So, and maybe just a little bit more food for thought with, to that conversation. Everyone has made it sound like the Aurora, Aurora pumps are owned by Pentair, which is a very common, that pretty much in the Midwest is the pool supply company. So I know it says four weeks, I don't know what the lead time exactly would be, but they made it sound like it's more readily available than the one we have.
Or the one that went down, it sounded like we were going to have it overnight because they thought it was going to be, or not overnight, but that weekend, we would be able to replace it, right? The one that, when we lost the
No, we, we never had any indication. We didn't know when it was going to be available until we were told that it was six weeks out. But the food for thought maybe to add to this conversation is that this pump, the Marlowe Series Prime Line, if we order that and put it in as-is, it's a replacement of failed equipment, which our insurance would cover. If we order the Aurora pump, our insurance, the way I understand the policy, they would cover the cost of that pump, but any rework of that room, change of the design, any change to the concrete, to the plumbing, anything like that, that would all be the city's responsibility because it's not failed equipment by our insurance policy. David, if you understand that the same way, that's my understanding of it. So really, from the city's standpoint, our insurance policy is going to cover the cost of replacing the pump and the cost of putting that new pump in if it stays under the same design as what the old one was. But as soon as we start changing how that pool operates or how it's designed to work, that is work above and beyond what our insurance policy would look at covering, and that would all be on our cost.
So when it was originally designed, it failed, correct?
No, there's no design failure in this. This, just the pump failed itself, it's not a design failure.
I'm going to say, but there might be different revenue stream than insurance for this.
I see where you're going with that. That, that would be a difficult thing to prove based on what failed on the pump. I think that would be a long shot.
Mr. Vedder.
Where I'm sitting, if we need to, if the cost to replumb for the Aurora pump is 20, $30,000, I'm moving $30,000, I'm moving to go with the Aurora pump. If you're talking $50,000, $70,000, $100,000, then I might rethink it.
Okay.
Maybe for next Tuesday, you could have an estimate of that number?
We can see, we can, we can see, we can get, it'll be, it'll be a ballpark.
Yeah.
At least you can know if it's 20, in the $20,000 range, or a $50,000, $70,000.
That'd be good.
Henry.
I think we should let Reed go ahead with the best pump, he's done some study on it. Let him go ahead and do it. We want, we want to make sure that we're not wasting a lot of time on something that is going to prove not work well, and we're missing days of utilization by the general public on swimming.
Anybody else have anything? No? We'll have a idea by next Tuesday, so we'll still be able to vote yes or no on it, so.
Depends on whether we're hitching to swim.
Right. The only, the only thing to add, then, is the, I'll have to bring back updated pricing on everything. The, the price, and I talked to David about this before the meeting, the price on the Marlowe Series Prime Line is good until the 15th. So we were kind of looking at this, saying that if we had a general feeling coming out of this, that we would put that on hold and then cancel it, but because that price, the price of steel is going to go up, so the price is going to go up with the steel tariffs in two days.
We'll call him. Well, that's, I think we may be able to work something out with him.
Okay. Just wanted to put that out there so everybody was aware of it.
Sure. Reed, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Number three, request to approve memorandum of understanding, Chief Headland.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you're all well aware, our department, Crixton Police Department and Polk County Sheriff's Office jointly have a records management system through a company called Zirker. Sheriff Erdman developed this MOU, basically just to cover some of the potential issues with, with the system and the cooperation between the three agencies. It covers data practices, in which case the primary factor is each agency, for example, our department, if I sit down at my desk and I open up my Zirker system, I can look at Crixton's reports, I can look at Polk County's reports. So I may be aware that, that they have a report on a particular person or a particular incident, but that doesn't give me the authority to release that information. So this specifically states that even if we're aware of that, we still don't release their data. Their data is their data, only they can release their data. We can notify a person that, yes, Crixton does have a report on said person. That's one aspect of it. Another aspect is just the annual maintenance fee. That's an arrangement that each agency has specifically with Zirker, and it just specifically states that we're responsible for that ourselves, and nobody else is going to take care of that. So if we didn't pay our maintenance fee, Crixton's not going to pick it up, or Polk County Sheriff's isn't going to pick it up, it's our responsibility. And then just any, basically any personnel, or if any other costs were to develop, then the department heads of these three agencies have to come to some mutual agreement as to how that's going to be taken care of, if there's some, some type of fee or unplanned or expense that should develop that isn't covered under those current maintenance fees. And then lastly, it's just the MOU, and what I'm requesting for you folks tonight is, well, tomorrow, next week, is to give me the authority to sign this. Both Polk County and Crixton have already passed this, and Sheriff Erdman and Chief Biermeyer have already signed the MOU, and assuming you folks have passed this on, I will then sign it after our next meeting.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. DeMars.
Thank you, Mr. President. If someone were to disclose information from a different agency, is there a penalty for that, or is it just you're not supposed to do that?
Oh, I think you potentially get in trouble with the state on that, because it's Minnesota Justice Information System. That's their, they have very strict laws on what can and cannot be released for that. So I think you would, I'm not positive on that, to be honest with you, but I believe you'd be potentially facing penalties from the state.
And then the second one is on the quarterly meetings. It requires two employees from each agency. Is there a purpose for that?
I think the main factor is the people that deal actually with the Zirker system on a day-to-day basis, just to try to determine if, if are we having any issues that we're seeing within our department, and maybe another, maybe one of those two other agencies has already encountered that, and what can we do to resolve it in the least amount of time.
Do both people need to go to that meeting?
Not necessarily, and that's certainly something that I can look into with, with both Sheriff Erdman and Chief Biermeyer.
Anybody else have any questions on this? See none, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief.
Therefore, consider to renew lease agreement, Mr. Gorty.
We have a tenant, the Goldstead Law Firm, in the infill building, whose lease expires at the end of this month. Several months ago, I went to the EDA, and I don't recall if I went to yourselves as well, but we created a new lease structure, excuse me, the proposed lease includes that revised lease structure, which will bring him up to market rate. I talked to one of the landlords in the area to ascertain what current market, what current rents are, and this lease will bring him up to that level. It's done over a five-year period. But going beyond that, there are two small corrections that remain here. There are, there are two reference points that are not accurate that have to be just revised within the agreement, otherwise the agreement is acceptable. EDA today recommended approval of it.
Anybody have anything on this? Little questions, accusations?
We wanted to double it, but...
I think it's a very reasonable amount, and we should go ahead on it.
All righty. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
But one other thing came up at the EDA meeting, and I talked with Mr. Murphy about it earlier. If I may just intrude at this point, the, we had a request to extend the $100,000 program for builder's incentive to the homes that are in Cooley View. We have a builder who's interested in building a home in Cooley View and like to take advantage of that. We've never faced that issue, because the program had just, we had always done it for Water's Edge, done it only in Water's Edge. EDA today recommended that this be extended to the Cooley View as well. What has happened is we've had, we've had five homes in that program, five spec homes. Four have already sold, and the city's been reimbursed. One is under construction, and we anticipate reimbursement in the near future on that. So this would be the sixth home, sixth spec home, that will be built on city-owned lots that would not have otherwise had homes but for the program. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to bring the revised program to the, to the city council for approval at next week's meeting.
Any issue with that? Mr. DeMars.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what would be the financial impacts to the program? How does that put the program in, as a state of health?
We allow up to, we allow up to three homes at any point in time. It just means the three homes can be drawn from a larger pool of lots. So we only have one lot right now that's under the program. This would be the second lot, and there would be a third lot available if we, if one, if a builder came in and tried to take advantage of the program. But that's, it would be the same rolling three lots, so it wouldn't change anything with regard to that respect, it just extends it to more city-owned lots.
Right, it'd have no budget impact at all. Yep. Anybody else have anything? Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to number five, update in city website. Mr. Goldstead.
Megan asked me to address this. There's the talk of changing the city website to be internally controlled. We currently have a agreement with Civic Plus. That agreement is on a year-to-year basis. Depending upon the timeframe that we would want to get our own website up and running, we would potentially, according to the agreement, need to give them a 60-day notice. It's my understanding, the, the lease would run from September 1st, so it would have to be at least 60 days prior to that if we were going to terminate. If we wanted to do it earlier, this agreement indicates that we could do so, but the city would end up having to pay them for each month on the early out, so to speak. It would be my recommendation, if we were thinking about doing that and terminating it early, prior to the 60-day notice, that since we've been a long-term contractee with Civics Plus, that we would attempt to potentially negotiate something less than a total buyout. I'm not exactly sure when this website that we're talking about would be ready to go, you know, up and running, but assuming if it was January, you know, you'd still have eight, nine months that you would still owe on that contract at, I'm not sure, this was an old contract, so I'm not sure what the current price is per month.
Wasn't the reason, the impetus for changing in the first place was a change in the service they were providing of some kind?
I'm not thinking it was Civic Plus changing the service that was providing. We were thinking that what we could do is, there was, there was consideration previously about having golden shovel.
Right, right, but it, it just seems to me, if I recall, that there was some predicate for...
Civic Plus is discontinuing that platform, the old platform, the website.
See?
They're trying to roll everybody over to a new one.
It was something like that. What's the date of that?
I don't know that part of it.
Just when you need a Megan.
Well, if that's the case, and they're discontinuing the platform, I'm sure you wouldn't end up having to pay to go forward unless they were asking you to re-up on a new platform. I was just asked to review this contract, and I don't have, I don't have that answers for you.
Get in touch with them, along with our IT people to, that know all of the ins and outs of this sort of thing.
I think you just need to contact them, ask them that question. Since you're changing your platform, are we re-leased from our contract then? Then get a solid date from Correa, when the new one can be up and running. Got that? Anybody else have anything? Okay. Entertained a motion adjourned. Lou Petrovsky, second. My name is DeMars, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Full, same sign, motion is carried, means adjourned. We still have our close remaining. Five minutes, 10 minutes break.